... report that we had, there was also compensation for staff time from the city that Walmart is paying for because of this project being a Walmart project and just wanted to make sure that it was made public that this is not affecting our funds here at the city and that this is all due to Walmart and their extension budget. Frank?
Any other questions or comments? Very well, I can open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to address council or ask questions regarding this item, please step forward. The podium, introduce yourself and where you're from. Seeing on bring it back to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve consent agenda item number three.
I have a motion in second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Passing unanimously. Moving on to item four. Mr. Folsom.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a purchase of an equipment trailer so that we can move our grader and roller to various parts of the city. We're having a difficult time trying to rent one, so we're purchasing one. This exceeds my purchasing authority, which is $20,000. The lowest estimate that we received was $21,775, which in addition to that will be tax license and registration, so probably another $2,000 on top of that. Fifty percent of the purchase of the trailer will come from gas tax and another 50% will be paid out of Measure V.
Thank you, Mr. Folsom. Vice Mayor.
The reason I wanted to pull this is because I think everything that has to do with our success with Measure V funds should be brought to the public and I think this is important and that we should be purchasing this trailer to make sure that we can access all of the roads in all of our city to make sure that the impact of Measure V is felt by everyone. So, thank you very much for your report.
Well, then, also for some clarification, I talked to our public works director about this. There is some piece of equipment that you can't road or drive along the roadways and that's what this trailer would accomplish is getting those pieces of equipment to the areas that we need to do our grading and our road repair projects. So, any questions of the public? If this is your time to address council on this item and purchase of a trailer to move our equipment, please.
Right.
Just as you did before, you did famously for your first council meeting.
Okay, addressing that subject, the grading and the wetter roller thing that goes along.
We're just talking about the purchase of a trailer at this point.
Oh, just the purchase of a trailer? Oh, okay, excuse me, sorry.
Do you like that we purchased a trailer?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I don't know if it benefits Brown Street.
It benefits Brown Street.
Any other people wanting to address council on this item? Thank you very much on closed public comment, bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve consent agenda item number four.
Second. I have a motion in second by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, hold on, we're spending money, so I need a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Perron?
Aye.
That concludes what was our consent agenda. Moving on to item five, should be a public hearing, conduct protest hearing on the establishment of a maximum rate for solid waste collection services and setting of a maximum, I'm sorry, maximum rate services required by the city of Clear Lake, municipal code section 11-3.13. Mr. Folsom, you have your report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Can I get this to work? So, the purpose of the hearing, on June 8th, the city council approved a rate increase to the solid waste collection fee charged by Clear Lake Waste Solutions under the franchise agreement for customers as of July 1st, 2017. Proposition 218 only applies to fees that are imposed and not when parties can choose to participate in a service or a privilege. With the approval of the universal solid waste collection ordinance, the service is now required and therefore the fees are imposed for the service. The beginning of universal solid waste collection is expected to begin April 1st, 2018. And the reason I go through all this is that in the past, we have approved fee increases with Clear Lake Solutions but have not gone through the 218 process. That's because it was not an imposed fee, you could choose to participate or not in the service. Due to universal solid waste collection now, it would be imposed and that's therefore the reason why we go through the 218 process. So, the notification process for 218, so any, if you have a tax, fee assessment or charge assessed by any agency upon any parcel or upon any person as an incident of property ownership, the law requires, one, a 45-day mailed notice to all property owners and existing customers, and two, a majority protest hearing in which silence equals consent. There was a notice that was placed on the dais in front of each of you that was a copy of what was mailed to every parcel owner of record and everyone who currently receives solid waste collection service from Clear Lake Waste Solutions. So, just to go through the rates a little bit, the former rates for a 32-gallon car was $1,246, that went up to $1,999. Those are some examples of comparable rates within the very close area. Other market rates, again, Clear Lake in 1999, you've got Mendocino County, it's around $31, so it's a very competitive rate. There's an annual rate adjustment through the franchise agreement each year where there's potential rate adjustment by the consumer price index, potential fuel surcharge based on the cost of gasoline, changes in pass-through costs, extraordinary items, pass-through costs or client's disposal costs, processing costs, regulatory costs, extraordinary items are increases or decreases in CWS, answer Clear Lake Waste Solutions costs, they're outside of CWS's control, including changes of law excluding unionization. So, the number of writings purported to be protests as of the close of business on Thursday, August 10th at 5:00, there are 25 written protests against the proposed rates. The way it works is there's one vote per parcel, so either the owner or the tenant can protest but not vote for one particular piece of property. There are 14,611 parcels within the city limits, majority protests would need to be at least 7,306 protests. Excellent. There are exemptions to the universal service that we went over in the previous meeting, but residential properties where no food is prepared or consumed, residential properties where no solid waste of any kind is generated, residential properties not connected to power or water and are not able to connect without action by the utility, vacation homes used exclusively by the owner and not rented or used by others during the year. If there is a solid waste code violation, that would terminate an approved exemption. Excellent. So, the recommended actions tonight are to open a public hearing, ask for public comment, ask for last call for protest, close the public hearing, ask the city clerk for a final tally of protests and where the majority protest exists, we may need to have a short recess for the city clerk to tally, then bring it back to the council to discuss the item and staff recommends adopting resolution 2017-50, setting the maximum rates for service. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Folsom. Any questions by council members? Yes, question, ma'am.
I just wanted to clarify and to make sure the public was aware, we're not discussing universal garbage service today, we are solely discussing the rate fee increase. Right. Thank you.
With that in mind, may I see a show of hands for those members here in the council chambers that are here to speak on this item tonight? Show of hands. I want to make sure everybody gets a chance to talk, so we need to know how much time is set. Okay? Not just against, but even if you're speaking for the item. Okay. Madam Clerk, okay, very good. We want to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak, so we're setting the timer at two minutes. About two minutes to present your case. What I would also like to say is, each member here wanting to speak either for or against this item, please provide your full name and the address that you're speaking about, your relationship to it, whether you're a property owner or a tenant on the property. All right? Everybody clear on that? So, your name and the address of the property you're speaking on. And remember, only one person can speak for that property. Okay? You'll have two minutes to do that. All right, with that, I would like to open the public hearing and take public comment for item number five of tonight's agenda. If you would like to speak, please step forward, introduce yourself. If there's a line, let's please start it over here to my right, your left, and we'll take you one at a time. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Marie Weathers. I'm the manager at Lakeside Mobile Home Park, 5775 Oak Highway 53 in Southern California. We receive no information about this because we currently do our own garbage service at the rate of $15 a month per tenant, which covers green waste and garbage. Many of us live on limited income, some of us are raising families, and I don't know, I have no idea what the rates are going to be, but I know I for one cannot afford to pay the garbage company what it was costing us the last time they were in our park, not to mention the fact that it costs $60,000 to fix our driveway, not a city street, a driveway, because their trucks are so heavy, that it took away from things that needed to be done otherwise so that we had a decent amount of driveway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marvin Tooms. I live at 4058 Oak Avenue in Clear Lake, and my bill has already gone up $24. I don't know if that's the same thing we're all talking about now.
We're talking about the rate, yes, sir?
Yeah, my rate, instead of paying $82, I just got it over $105. I called the company and they said, I said, "Why are you getting the increase?" And they said that they needed, they haven't had an increase in quite a spell. And I said, "24 dollars?" And, you know, to me, that's kind of excessive anyways. But like the lady said, I live on a limited income also, so I've been a contributor here for 25 years.
Have you spoken to them about different sized containers and pricing?
I did, I went down to a smaller one.
Okay.
But I shouldn't, being a senior, why shouldn't you give up? I'm giving things up. The older I get, the more I have to give up.
I didn't know if you were utilizing the entire space each week, a lot of folks are not. I didn't know if you were utilizing the entire space each week in your can.
Sometimes I do, sometimes I don't, you know, that's common sense. So, anyways, as far as their expenses go, it seems that their fuel cost over what they've been paying previously, it seems like they should have been fairly even, even gone down. And it seems also every time they pick up a blue can, they're making money off the blue can, putting your recyclables in it. So, that's part of their business also, and also now the green cans are making money for the garbage company. So, their $24 increase to me is just, doesn't make any sense to me. So, if anybody could have a little bit of compassion for us older folks, and please don't squeeze us out of Clear Lake, it's the most economical place, that's why I moved up here. And now it's competing with the big area and everything, so if we could possibly have a little compassion for the older folks.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Nancy Dingler, and I have two lots where my home is on and the other one, there's nothing on it.
What's your address?
I'm 13251 Country Club Drive, and the other one is 13241 Country Club Drive. Now, clarification, are you going to insist on garbage rates for the vacant lot? And if, are doing, I mean, are you going to do it and then I have to come down here and say, "It's a vacant lot"?
Only lots with residents on it.
Okay.
You saw the exemptions, I figured.
Yeah, I know, but I had a little thing with animal control here recently, I've had to write to them and call them and tell them that the zoo dogs are dead, and they can't seem to get that straight, so.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
She don't meet, and she was at my line, it's not meeting Tuesday night. I'm Fred Molder, 1518 Bywood Side Drive. My foster aunt lives in Los Angeles, she got this lift in her mailbox, and I got three of them in mine up here. I'd like to know, is this going to be an extra invoice coming to me or to her or what? I just got increase from Ukiah, my invoice goes to Ukiah, not down here. Now, what's the deal here on this? Need to be clarified.
Okay.
And is this city going to mail out invoices or statement extra?
No.
Oh, no.
No.
Okay, I don't put out garbage cans every week. The truck comes out every Tuesday morning, the first truck, that's the black can or the brown and the blue.
Correct.
The green rice comes in around 1:32 o'clock on the same street, so the street won't get all beat up. So, that's the deal, that's why I need to clarify, because she's coming up here next Monday for a whole week, and she would like to know what's going on with something. I'm paying $50 right now, it went up from 34 to 50. So, I don't have to pay nothing to this little city, I'm on that little city.
No.
Okay, so I do have roadside service, and I'm well under 50 feet, but I'm, because when I put my can out on the right, the edge of the driveway. So, you said under and over, and that's why I'm trying to clarify, so mine's at the edge of the driveway, and I don't really have much garbage, most of it is 98% recyclable. Now, I fell out my blue can to the top, and I make sure the lid is closed. I find a blue can with the lid wide open, and carport sticking 10 feet up, and they shall pick it up.
Right.
So, okay, I'm glad this is clarified.
Can I get your, I am, clarify, would that be, are you opposed to the rate or are you not opposed to the rate?
Are you opposed to the rate, Fred, or not opposed?
How would you know what size garbage can I'm using? You might come out and check it?
No, you're right.
Did you see anybody come out and check it? That's how you probably clarify the rate.
Is the rate good or bad?
This hearing is about the rates?
Yeah, that's why I talked in that.
Right.
How would you know what size can I'm using?
We're asking you, can you use, are you happy with the rate?
Um, well, I could pay $50 to Ukiah.
Okay.
Yeah, I can pay that.
You're okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with the $50. It went from 34 to 50, that's not too bad. It's because I own my own business.
Thank you.
I am, I'm the owner, the employer, employee of my business, I work it by myself.
Exactly.
So, I could pay the $50 every three months.
Okay, you're up to, okay, thank you, Fred. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Kathleen Springs, and I live at 1467 Bya Valley Avenue, and I just had an issue with the statement, the paper that I got in the mail. I don't have garbage service, but I do take care of my garbage. I go to the dump, I cannot afford garbage service because of the type of job that I have, I just, my income is very slim, but I do take my garbage to the dump, and I'm responsible that way, so the increase that you guys are trying to do, I think it's not fair to everybody that pays taxes. I think it's just not right, it's unconstitutional. I think we all have rights, and I think that everybody in this room has rights, and we live in America, we don't live in a foreign country. I think that we should just be able to pay our bills and not have increase with our bills, you know, just the way it is. So, I hope that I don't get a bill or being forced to get garbage service because I can't afford it, because I do take care of my garbage. Thank you and have a good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I guess I'm a little more right-wing than the lady before me. My name is Bill Tru, I'm 6900 Meadowbrook, and if this Waste Solutions Company really was offering a service that was valuable and within our means and useful and necessary, they would have to have the city force us to use it. Like the lady before me, I take my garbage to the dump not because I'm opposed to garbage service, but rather because it's more convenient to me, and I see no reason why the city should benefit a monopoly like this, and this is not a situation where you have, where you have electric or water or sewer or something like that, that is, by its nature has to be a monopoly. This is something where anybody can drive down the street to pick up garbage, and if these people can't win the market with prices and service, then they don't deserve to be in it. And that's the long shot for me. It's not right that we should be forced to pay for service, we neither need nor want. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Yeah, my name is Francis Ellis.
Can we wait till you get up to the mic? Oh, can't hear you.
My name is Francis Ellis, I just came up from San Francisco, I received a notice in the mail, I left a notice, oh, I grabbed the envelope, but anyway, I missed the, you put something on the screen or something, some type of exemption or?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, well, I'm, the property I own here in Clear Lake is not necessarily for living. I mean, I'm staying in there for a couple of days, but.
Is it a vacation home, sir?
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, a vacation home and a virtual recording studio for myself, but I don't allow food in the house or cigarettes or smoking, I don't, just to keep, you know, so there's no wounds anywhere. Yeah, so I, personally myself, I, I eat, I go down to Jack in the Box or something down the street, I'm a single person, it's cheaper to do that, so, anyway, I never, since I've owned it a year and a half, I've never really even had an armed camp in this topic. I was wondering, yeah, I mean, it's, I have a full-time house, I have a condominium, Mall Creek, 792 condos, and I have a very large garbage facility, I actually never, I just have the garbage, I just bring it down there and they take it out of the car for me before I park it, yeah. In San Francisco, I have a pretty, you know, I have two, I have property in San Francisco that has garbage not being used, property mortgage heavy that has garbage not being used, so I have all this garbage facilities, and so I just thought it's like a, you know, I don't want to pay the bill for it in Clear Lake too. Yeah, I just feel like I should have, the most garbage I've had there in a year and a half is just a, like Walmart's bag full of garbage, it's about it. I just take it, and I throw the garbage down.
Good question.
Yeah, I have a question for you, sir. Give us your address, the property you own in Clear Lake.
913, 15913 27 Valley.
Thank you. And did you say that it was a seasonal home or a vacation home?
Well, it's.
But that is one of our exceptions to.
Yeah, it's supposed to be a vacation home, but I use it more for like transferring videotapes, music tapes to CD and DVD, I use it, it's just a personal place that you can have.
Is it your primary residence?
It's not my primary residence, no.
How often do you come up?
Uh, well, lately I've been here, I've been here all month, actually, except for the exception this week, but.
You might satisfy the exemption clause? You might want to talk to city staff about that.
Yeah, I came up, because summertime, you clean down our stuff around the area, I keep it long, you know, really short.
So, I'm not clear on whether that was against?
I was thinking it was against, but are you against the universal driver or the rates?
Um, I didn't even get a chance to look at the rates, like I said, I forgot the letter, I'm down in San Francisco, I'll have to angle up here later.
I believe we've got one out on the table.
Oh, yeah.
For the public, if you'd like to check that out.
Okay, yeah.
Has the rates on.
Yeah, I'm not here full-time, again, it's coming up whenever I'm going in, but I do, I do come up like less than a month, a couple of times a month just to check up on everything, you know.
Very good, sir. I want to make sure I give everybody a chance to talk.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
So, can I, can I vote for the exemption?
If you, if it's you, that, absolutely, you might want to check, check out on the table, get that piece of paper.
Okay, I'll take a look at it.
Yes, ma'am. Your turn again.
Yes.
Busy night.
Yes, Revertico, 13289 Brown Street, Clear Lake. Are you talking, are rate increase from $46.34, I believe, to six, almost $60, is this going to be an increase added to the one that's already been imposed by the Clear Lake disposal or Waste Management? How do you, so it's not, so this is going to be another one?
No, as far as I'm concerned, the increase was done on July 1st, and you have the ability to protest that increase today, there will not be an additional one, though annually it can be reviewed for the increases that they need for the reasons that we have listed above, such as increased gas prices, increased costs and other things like that. Annually, we have increased it minimally for the past five or six years.
Waste Solutions through our franchise agreement.
It's been approved through the council for the past five or six years that I've been actively coming to council member, council meetings as well, and the council member. It's been very minimal increases. This year, we're seeing a larger increase.
Okay, so this is the increase that I've already received on my bill, so it's going to be nothing more, okay? But this also does this include that I heard that we, they will come and pick up my trash client, trash cans and clean them, if they're in disrepair, they will replace them and things like this, that's all I have to do is call?
That would be a question brought for the Waste Solution Company.
Oh, okay, and I mean, because an increase, I see people, I walk my dogs at the park all the time, Red Bull Park, Austin Park, and across the way at the other park, and I see people all the time opening up their, their trunks and taking out bags of garbage. So, people, evidently they can't afford or won't get the service, so this increase, I'm, I'm okay, I was concerned that it was going to be a lot more, but I'm not, you know, people are on limited income, I am one, so everybody keeps going up. You're going to practice out.
Damn, I'm clear again on where she was.
Pro, pro, oh.
I'm protesting.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Heather Jewell, and I live at 16371 32nd Avenue. I have wonderful neighbors there, I've been there for 30 years, and I always had trash pickup, but when my husband passed away five years ago, I only had very little garbage, and I asked them, I called and asked them, couldn't I just have once a month pickup because I don't fill anything? And they said, "No," so I said, "Come and pick up your trash cans, I won't be doing this." Now, I remarried, and my husband has a house in Lowly, and I don't like his house, I like mine, so we live at my house, and he has the trash picked up at his house, and we take what little bits we have over to his house. We also are volunteers, and I've often picked up trash around the avenues. There's another thing, and I don't know if this is pertinent, but the Joneses on 32nd Avenue, they live almost near Knottite Avenue, they have a car up on blocks with no wheels on the front.
We need to focus on, are you for the increase or not?
I don't want an increase, and I don't want you to charge me because we take care of it at my husband's house.
Okay.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
And for the car on the blocks, if you want to talk to us after the meeting or come visit City Hall and let them know.
It looks like a used car up there.
Good evening, sir.
Hi, I'm Tom MacArthur, I'm at 4124 Lansing Avenue. Right off the bat, I am against this increase, it's ridiculous. I just got raised from $46 a month to, I don't, for two months, to $59.99 for supposedly two months, and the rate that they're proposing for the 32-gallon one I got is $20 a month. No, let's, yeah, let's just say one week, yeah, so that's $20 a month for the 32-gallon container or $40, $40 for two months, is it two months or three months?
Three months.
Three months, okay, it's quarterly, so that's, so it's basically $4 a week. I was thinking, I ended up and it went up to 67, 40 or something like that, from $59.99. But yes, I am against this increase, I'm against the monopoly of this garbage company over us and being forced to take, you know, so, I could take it's wrong.
Yes, sir?
I'm Joshua Hadley, 15594 38th Avenue, Clear Lake. I just want to say that I'm opposed to the rate increase. Do we just come up here and tell you or? I, I have a lot to say, I put my, I have the smallest can, I put it out once every two weeks, so that's it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Uh, this is my second time in front of the city council, and I apologize for not introducing myself the last time. My name is Ted Cottrell, and I live at 3834 Oakmont Drive, and I would like to say that I have checked to the amount of the raise. I think it's a little excessive. There's a great many people up here in Clear Lake that are living on fixed incomes, and I can tell you with my DGNE bill and this increase and my garbage pickup, it's just a little bit too much for people that are retired and on fixed incomes. And I thank you for listening. Thanks, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Andrea Keller. I live at 12988 Lake Shore Drive. I was very surprised by the increase. It's almost 30%, which I think is outrageous. 10% I think is manageable for most people, but the 30, almost 30% is really outrageous. I'm totally against this increase, this amount. And also, I'd like to know what will happen for people with their property if they're not able to pay their bill. What happens? What will you be doing?
If people are not able to pay?
Yes.
First, it will go through the collection process. If it still does not get paid, then it does get assessed to the property taxes.
So then what if they can't pay the property taxes because of the increase? Will there be fees attached to this, like legal fees added to your taxes as well as the garbage fees?
The amount assessed.
Okay, what if they can't pay, then what?
Eventually, they would go to a hack sale.
So this is basically a property...
Take your house down.
Scheme to take some property like for people, sounds like it to me. But almost 30% increase is outrageous. It's ridiculous. You can't prove it, the, the fuel fees have not increased that much. Fuel fees have decreased over the years and pretty much stabilized. So I don't, I don't see where you can claim 30, almost 30% increase. How can you justify that? I don't see that you can.
Thank you.
Chuck Leonard, City of Clear Lake, 5070 Gulf Avenue. And I have an opposite voice. I'm retired, I'm on fixed income. This is the cheapest garbage rates I've ever had in my life. I don't go with anybody, any of my friends, but pay as low rates as we do. You have to compare those. And I think we can afford it. People have to get their garbage away from their house. I explained this before, I know. I used to volunteer for public enforcement, saw people collecting garbage for six months at a time, a year at a time in a, I mean, in a utility trailer, pickup bed. We have, the people have to get their garbage out of there. They don't take the garbage to the dump every week. This is what we're trying to avoid. But the important thing is the fees. The fees still are very reasonable, and if I can afford it, I think some of the people can do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Rita Spurling. I live at 2515 on Highway 53, and I assume that Waste Solutions wants more money for gas or whatever. Can someone answer me as to if the garbage can lid is up so far? Is there a flat rate or not?
We don't work for Waste Solutions, so I, I don't work for Waste Solutions, so I don't know what...
Okay, well, Waste Management is not doing their job. If they're going to charge, and I quote, it says that it may include carts for the lid is not completely closed. You go over town and you look at how many garbage can lids are out. I've asked several people if they've been charged for that.
We have some talking in the audience, and I can't, can't hear, so I'm sorry, ma'am.
I've asked several people if they've been charged for that. No, they haven't. So if they're doing their job, they'll have more money. And I oppose the fee.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Joseph Lutori. I live at 3591 Mountain Beach Street. I am, I have a terminal illness, and I live on a fixed income, and I think it'd be great if we had alternative collection, because I don't have that much garbage. If I want my garbage collected, I have to pay every week regardless if I have stuff in there or not. So it'd be nice to have every other week service at a lesser rate. I'm opposed to a large increase. I feel that you might be entitled to some increase, but it should be reasonable. And according to what you have already on this paper, you said, "If closed public hearing by motion, tabulate protest received and approve resolution, resolution number 2017." So it seems like you've already made your choice. Thank you.
That's the recommendation by staff. Yes, sir.
Now, on mode...
Need your name and your address, Bill.
4312 Sunset, Clear Lake.
Thank you.
Now, I'm on a fixed income, but my income keeps going down over medical. I don't know what kind of income he has, but here, you're talking about a rate increase, and you've already gave them a rate increase. Are you giving them a nudge or is that what you're doing?
Now, this is the protest hearing for that rate increase.
Yeah, but people are already getting billed for it.
Are you for or against it?
I'm against it.
Okay.
Now, everything in Clear Lake has already started going up. Food, everything, over what you people are doing. Now, these people cannot afford this. I don't know why you're coming down on the poor people in the city of Clear Lake. Don't you have feelings for them? Or what is it? Are you trying to run them out of town? Is that it? How about that one?
Craig Campbell, 5544 Huron Avenue. I may have missed something here, but I didn't see any financial statements or any cause for the rate increase. What is based on what their need is? Was that put out? Where are the rate, where are these increases coming from?
We went over all that at the June 8th council meeting.
Okay, so let's pretend for a minute that this approved, and you pass this rate increase, and then we move on to this universal collection, and that's passed. So now, let's pretend for, again, that we have twice as many customers as we have now, and they're all at the new rate. So the same amount of trucks, same amount of drivers, what are the, what's the vendor going to do with all this money?
Actually, from those previous hearings, there would be, it's going to be an increase in the cost to the vendor, because they have to buy, have additional trucks, additional drivers for the increase in work.
And that's been substantiated?
It was submitted and discussed.
I've been in business my whole life, and I don't think so. Not, not, not to double your, double your revenue, they're not going to double their expenses. I think there's something... I'm opposed.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Yes, ma'am. We take you to the mic, we need to hear you.
Teresa Danz, 3579 Hometown Avenue. I'm opposed. And I'm uncertain as to what this council meeting is about, if it's already been passed, if people are being billed. What purpose does this debate on issue have? Is it going to be any relevant and make it any different than what it is?
Law requires it, so that's why we're having this hearing, to hear from you.
So it's not going to change anything? It's going to be all of us complaining about what you've done and making your decision without involving us then, but you're involving us now?
You were welcome to come. It was publicly noticed.
When? I didn't receive, I didn't receive a notice in the mail like I did for this?
Yes.
That's true, because it was approved, and that's why you got the notice because of this hearing.
I'm not that...
Thank you, ma'am.
Ma'am, what is your, anyone here street? None of you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Please step forward. So now, I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this item and bring it back to council for further deliberation. Actually, I need a motion to close. Motion closing. I have a motion.
Second.
Councilmember Harrison, a second, from Vice Mayor Sabatier. All those who favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. I'm sorry. Councilor Janice Lee.
I think at this point, we're going to ask for, how much time? Five minutes? Five-minute recess?
So we're going to take, take a five-minute break on this item to tabulate a number of mail, mailings we've received and the number of you that spoke with your concerns tonight. So we will return at 7:05.
So the current... So it would go up. So he's got the smallest one, so he's got $85. Next side is $90. That's a monthly rate.
All right, let's bring you back to work.
$68.5.
Thank you all. Sir, if you could just take your seat, we're going to reconvene.
Please sit down, please.
Sir, can you, can you have, take a seat, please? We're reconvene.
No, I want to speak with him.
Okay, we're going to get, get the meeting started, so this is not the time. You can speak with him after the meeting.
I don't live here, and they want to increase the garbage. And if I move...
Sir, please take a seat.
If I move here...
Sir, bye. Please take a seat.
If I move here, I don't create garbage. That's why I want to move from Vallejo to here. I don't have garbage.
Please don't ask me to...
I live alone. So why, in Vallejo, they charge me a lot, and I call them, hey, why you charging? I'm moving out of here.
Chief.
Because I live alone.
Sir, you need to leave.
I don't have garbage.
Sir, okay. You're disrupting the meeting, please.
No, I, I want to ask him.
You can sit down and have your minute to talk.
Wait, later?
Yes.
I want to ask him.
Yes, later, yes. During the, during the open meeting.
Who can I ask?
All answer questions. All answer questions.
Can you answer now?
No, you can't.
What, what time is it?
All right, we're going to reconvene, sir. If you would, please step outside, step to the lobby, and you can talk to the acting chief.
What time can I come back and ask questions?
When the meeting is over.
When the meeting is over.
What time is it going to be?
I have no idea, sir, but it's taking a little bit longer now. All right, we are reconvene. Madam Clerk, may I have the tally of the vote?
Honorable mayor and council members, the final count of the protest is 43.
43 against. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any questions of staff or council this night? Mr. Harris?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
This includes the letters that we received also within our report?
It does, and plus one, what that was received. Just a moment, we'll be back.
Thank you. Go ahead, ask your question.
So how many needed to protest in order for this not to pass?
7,306.
Any questions of staff? Going to need an action on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution number 2017-50, setting the maximum rates of service.
I have a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, by Councilmember Bennett. Madam Clerk?
Say something, Paul.
Vice Mayor has something you'd like to say.
I just want to let everybody know that the idea of holding on to garbage for a month rather than a week is, if you look around our city, it places our neighborhoods in a situation that we don't want to see. We want, we don't want to see piles of garbage in a trailer that animals can get into, and then it gets, makes a mess in the neighborhood. We don't want to see garbage piled up on someone's front porch or someone's back porch if that's your neighbor and you can see into their yard. It needs to be picked up weekly. If you go to the landfill and drop that off, it is a minimum of a $5 fee. If you add that weekly for the month and you get the smallest garbage can, you will pay less for somebody coming to your front yard and pick up that garbage can and offer the service than you would if you went to the landfill and did this weekly. We're trying to clean up our city. We're having difficulties getting people to work with us to clean up the city, just like it's necessary to have electricity and water. If you live in a home, you create waste. It is also necessary to have a plan on how to deal with that waste. We're trying to create that plan so that we can clean up our city and we can be the city that we want to be and that we've always wanted to be, and we have that forward movement, and this is to continue that forward progress. $5 extra to make it $20 a month, $60, it can be a toll on those with fixed income, but there are ways to reduce the way that you manage your garbage, lower it and lower it to the least expensive can. So please find ways to make that happen. We have to do what we need to do to clean up our city. We can't continue as is. And so that's my last comment.
I have a comment.
Madam Clerk, can you call a roll?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Peralta?
Aye.
What about our senior people that cannot give their cash? Isn't there any way you guys could put a placard outside?
This item is closed, ma'am.
I know, but you know, I just don't, I couldn't speak because someone else was speaking in my house.
Thank you very much, but we need to keep order for the meeting. Item number six, consideration and authorization of additional funds for change orders on Phillips and 18th Avenue, Class II bicycle lanes and road rehabilitation project. Mr. Olson.
Thank you, Mayor. So the current situation is Team Gelati was the contractor that was selected to work on the 18th and Phillips Avenue repave and expansion project. When that contract was approved, the city council authorized, the city manager, myself, to approve up to $50,000 in change orders without coming to council. So far, I've approved $33,000 in change orders for the following items. We extended repaving to include the intersections and, I forgot to put that on there, but the endpoint of where we stopped at Phillips, we, the original plan ended right before the intersection. We extended it into the intersection. We did the same thing with 18th. We are anticipating that we'll have a couple of additional change orders coming for some unexpected costs when it was designed due to rock work and doing some additional asphalting and those types of things. So the recommended action is to approve the $33,000 in change orders and then authorize myself to approve any additional change orders up to $65,000. We're anticipating roughly a little under 55 or so, but we want to have a little bit of cushion just in case there is that little bit of extra.
Right, and that'll make the project complete and much nicer, cleaner project. Thank you, Mr. Olson. Any questions of staff on this item? Yes, Vice Mayor.
I just wanted to check. I know that they've been doing a really good job on getting the aprons off of Phillips. Is all the aprons on all sides of the intersection as well included? Is all the aprons on all sides of the intersection as well included in the intersection itself?
They should be, yes.
Yeah, they're paving up twenty feet from the white prolongation. Mr. Harris?
Just out of curiosity, do we know approximately where, what the situation was regarding the rock?
It was to do some additional drainage work that wasn't in the original scope of services, so when they bored down to do that, they started hitting boulders, and so they had to bring in some heavy equipment to deal with that.
Any other questions? I'd like to open this up for public comment. If anyone has a question on this item, please step forward. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Linda Sander-Pilgrim. I live in Cleveland Brown Street. My question is, you said you guys were just paving Eighteenth Avenue. Is that the only street this year, or will it be other streets included in that?
Oh, the project includes Eighteenth and Phillips, and what we're doing is authorizing our city manager, because of some additional increases that were unanticipated, have additional latitude to spend money to pave.
So only Eighteenth Avenue might cost sixty-five thousand dollars?
No, for the change request that he's requesting, because they found some rocks under the dirt, but they didn't know where they were.
Okay, and so next year?
That's up to the Public Works Director to, and he has several projects on the slate.
And so you are only working on paved roads at this time?
No, ma'am, we're grading streets as well, but that's not on topic. I need to stay on topic as far as, do you have a comment about our approval?
No, I actually saw it, and I want to say I actually saw Eighteenth Street, and it's looking nice.
Thank you very much.
And I'm really looking forward to it coming this way.
It will be happening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council on this item? Thank you very much, I'll close public comment. Bring it back to council for action. Before we have further deliberation.
So what you're looking for is approval of the change order?
Correct, ma'am.
And that authorizing for an addition, for you to approve an additional order of two sixty-five thousand?
Correct.
So I still believe that.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I would like to, I was curious and thought maybe I misread, and I finally brought it up here on my iPad, but I received a report, and maybe I got an update, and then see the update, but it was originally for fifty thousand?
Originally, it was fifty. Met with Public Works Director this morning. He thinks that we need to add just a little bit extra.
So this has changed since this morning?
Yes. Apologize for that.
I have a motion on the floor. Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We have a roll, all vote.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
And Mayor Perdop?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to the next item, City Manager Report.
Thank you, mayor. Public Works Director and I met with the county and Lakeport staff to discuss stormwater issues. We've got some reports that are due to the state that we're working to get those finalized. Chuck Davis is retiring this week. Chuck Davis is the Public Works Supervisor. Staff had a barbecue lunch for him this week. Mike Baker will be taking his place as supervisor, so we'll look forward to seeing a lot of Mike. The Planning Commission met last week and approved the recommendation to council to abandon a portion of Brandon Avenue adjacent to Conacta Water District. That will be coming to the city council for your consideration at the upcoming meeting. We had a marijuana ad hoc committee meeting today where we, that committee came up with some recommendations that will be bringing back to council for some direction. We had National Night Out last week. I think it was a great success. It was a really good turnout. I want to thank Chief Selly and all of his staff, the Fire Protection District for coming out. We had the Army out there. It really was a really nice event. We're planning to continue this, an annual tradition. Just to notify, the animal control facility was closed for a portion of the day today. We had a bit of an outbreak of parvoc, so there's a procedure that we have to go through to double-clean the facility, so we did that, so it's backed up and open. Some upcoming events, we, today is the last day of photo contests, so we will be looking at that at the Marketing Standing Committee and then bringing that back to the city council. We have a workday planned at the community center on August nineteenth. We are seeking volunteers for anyone who wants to help out over there, primarily, and Councilmember Overton, during her remarks, can add more to it, but primarily, we'll be looking at painting for the inside. August thirtieth is the State of the City, which is from five to eight p.m. at the community center. The catering will be by Chatterbox Cafe. We'll be talking about updates to the various things that are going on within the city. September third, I'll be at the Lake County Fair, participating in the Kiss My Clear Lake Bass contest, so look forward to seeing you all there. And finally, September ninth is the Senior Annual Fundraiser, and I'm sure again, Councilmember Overton has something to say about it. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Will you leave that up?
It's really small, though.
We're working on that as well.
Okay.
Well, Madam Overton, I'm just going to pass it right over to you. Do you have something else to report?
Sure. Well, yeah, on the painting, on August nineteenth, we're basically going to concentrate on the painting because I'm working with somebody on getting a design and a layout for this river system. So we're looking at October, which is also a better time to also plant the grass and stuff or whatever we decide to do there. It's a better time of year to plant, so I'll be bringing that back to the council on that. So we are seeking volunteers to come and help us take that maybe that week, and maybe if we can find somebody to do some straight paint to make base walls, and then we can really concentrate on doing all the trimming and the different colored walls on there would be really great. We are having our fundraiser on September the night. That's our largest fundraiser that we have during the year to help raise money for our meal programs for our seniors, so we're really, you know, promoting that. Again, the last couple of years have been rough with the fires and everything, and we understand that, you know, that's what needed to happen, but we're hoping that people will support us this year. So if anybody would like tickets, please let me know. We're looking for sponsors on that. I've been working with the Cornerstone Tiny Houses. They are also going to be at the fair, so please stop there and look at their little house and what their ideas are. And so we're going to start working with that to start trying to raise some funds. There's a couple of potential properties they're looking at, so now we're going to start raising funds for that, so look for their fundraisers. I went to the Lions Meeting on Tuesday. It was very nice. I've never been to one, and it was really kind of very nice to go and see that they do really have a lot of participants there. So one of the comments I wanted to make was on the road tax, when they were talking about, you know, doing the roads. I think people need to realize, one, if we just put that road tax in, it takes a while for that money to build up. We're kind of, you know, we're just in the beginning of that, so, you know, we're kind of borrowing to get some of this stuff done, and so, you know, when that road tax starts really coming in, it's not going to happen overnight. So I know everybody wants their roads great, everybody wants their roads paved, but it's not going to happen overnight, and I just really want you guys to understand it does take some time, but it's the beginning, and we're on the road to start making our city more drivable.
This place is beautiful.
Yeah, it is very beautiful. Yeah, so, but I do appreciate you guys coming, and it's nice to see some new faces. Please come back and join our council meetings, so thank you for moving here. So, and that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
Where's your community center? We'll talk after this.
I don't have a great deal to report, but I did attend briefly the annual night out at Highlands Park, and it seemed like there was a pretty decent turnout there. It's nice that we're having more and more community events, and we're getting a lot more turnout at the events. It's always great to see. Couple of things to touch on. Councilwoman Overton actually brought up one of the things, and that's the Measure B funds. I know there's, it seems to me that there is a huge conversation about that right now, and I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about the way that the funds come in, and, you know, the Measure B being voted in is one step of that, and then there's a huge process to getting that set up at the state, and we actually start seeing that money coming in, and then once that money is coming in, it's being applied into your road structure. So that's where you're, you're not getting to that point. We're not quite there to that point yet, but we're seeing a lot of that happening. Some of the Measure B funds are actually being used, obviously, as we just seen approved, on the Phillips and Eighteenth Street, and also purchasing trailer, that sort of thing, but there should be some expectation to start seeing those road repairs taking place in the Great England, that sort of thing, ramping up pretty good in the next six months to a year. So it would be really nice to hear people come back and say, hey, I'm actually seeing it happen now, and that's what I'm looking to hear. It's always nice to hear the downsides too, so we can fix those problems, but people that come in and actually praise the improvements would be nice as well. And as far as the universal disposal, and this has been a kind of a hot button topic in approving the rate increases, both of those items, and they came kind of back-to-back, and that's a tough, tough thing to push through, even for us. I mean, we all live here in the city, and we have family who live here in the city, but ultimately, we firmly feel that we're doing what's right for our, I feel that I'm doing what's right for my community, but obviously with our vote, it sounds like we're pretty much in sync on that. But I will, what I will say is that I am here to do whatever I can for our community and to be an advocate for our community, having lived here my whole life, and always wanted to see the improvements, and finally in a position where I can work towards those improvements. And I wouldn't be voting to implement something if I didn't feel like it was doing something beneficial for our community, knowing that it's coming at a cost to myself and my parents who are on a fixed-income situation, my, my daughter, my siblings, they all live here, so obviously it affects all of us. So anyways, that being said, I appreciate everybody who came out tonight to speak for or against. The participation from our community, it seems to me, is the biggest lacking thing we have. So if we could have more people come out and say what you feel, participate in community events, an improvement in our community, that would be huge. Don't be silent. We don't want silence. We want participation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Phillips?
I want to just piggyback on what Councilman Harris said. It was an awesome turnout tonight. We should have a turnout like this at every council meeting. You know, agree with what goes on or not. Your voice is what makes a difference. We're all, we all live in a community. It's our community. I lived up in the Adams, raising a family here. We've adopted our grandchild, thirteen years old. What an experience that is. But we need a turnout. We need to hear the voices, good or bad. You don't yell at me. I've been yelled at my whole career, and I'm used to it. I can take it now. But I'd like to turn out. We need to hear the voices. I also attended National Night Out. How many hot dogs did you bake, did you cook?
Two hundred.
Two hundred. It was a good turnout. It was really good, and it's great to see that community down there with the law enforcement, first responders, department, and the military and all. I passed up using the climbing wall like Dr. De La. I attended Area Planning Commission meeting yesterday. It was very interesting, something down the pipe for all of us, it's outside of our area, but Caltrans did a presentation that, what's the time element for that four-lane highway coming up past, on Highway twenty, it'd be an eight-mile stretch. Or Highway twenty-ninth. Within the next couple of years, about an eight-mile straight stretch of road, that you're going to straighten that out, save us some of the curves heading up towards Kelseyville. There's a lot of work going on within the county, not only within our city with the budgets going on, but within the county itself, it's moving forward. We live in a unique area. We have this little gem within the state of California. Regardless of what the problems may be within our state, within our community here, we have a unique gem here, and it's a complete turnaround, and I was raised in this county like all the others probably in this group. What a difference what we've seen within the last few years.
Thank you.
Which mayor?
I will be brief. On July thirty-first, I met with Lake Shore Little League about some new potential ideas that they'd like to bring forth eventually to the city. I'm looking forward to that proposal coming through. On August first, I also was at National Night Out. I guess I was the official DJ that day. Had a really good time. I love seeing the city organizing something for the community rather than waiting for nonprofits and others to make it happen. To me, since I've lived here in this city, which has not been my entire life, that's a first, and I too am looking forward to have that happening again. I know that we cooked two hundred hot dogs. I must have eaten too many, because I know Chief Selly offered that we do a hot dog eating contest next year. Also, on August fifth, there was Power to the Youth, which is an event that I put together, which I thought was well-attended. Everybody seemed to have a good time, and we got hurt, that's always a bonus. And I think I heard something from somebody who said that there's not enough community stuff, and I just said two things in less than four days, and there's always something happening. Please look around, there's flyers, there's stuff on Facebook, there's stuff in the newspaper. We always have something going on. It's whether or not you want to join us in those endeavors and those events. Today, on August tenth, I was part of the Commercial Marijuana Cultivation Ad Hoc Committee. We'll see how the council feels about the proposal coming through, and I want to talk about something that I think is unique here. This is not related to me on the council, this is related to my work. I work over at Woodland Community College here in Clear Lake, which already, we're lucky, we have a community college in our city. I think it's a fascinating gem for our city. But we started something new. This is an endeavor between Conacta Unified School District and Woodland Community College. We are opening up, and we started this yesterday. Today, I met with the students. Tomorrow, we'll be signing up the students. We opened up a middle, college, high school. One out of eleven in the state of California. We have close to fifty students who are going to sign up as ninth graders and tenth graders in college, and if they continue through the process all four years, they should be graduating high school with forty-eight units of college credits. You need sixty units to get an associate's degree. I'm impressed that this is here in our city, and we should all be taking advantage of everything that we're trying to offer. I know that we were all really bummed when we lost Merrimount. That was an end of one era that gave us hope about having a four-year university, but I think that when something disappears, something new comes up. We have new opportunities, and middle college is that opportunity, so look around, see how it's going to change our future, and be a part of it, and let every young student know that this is happening here in Clear Lake. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
One last question. The photo contest, I know the photo contest is over after tonight, if not by five p.m. or already earlier. Can people continue submitting pictures if they choose to, just for the sense of having more pictures for the website and more pictures for anything? Okay, just wanted to check on that.
Good. Good. Let's see. Also participate in National Night Out, it's a great, we, very lucky to get to meet our officers, but also other community members. Thank you to Chief Selly for putting that together. One of the community where he's policing programs. When we get to see the folks that, I'm sorry, what?
They should know that everything at National Night Out was free.
Yes, everything was free. Thank you, Marie. Marie was one of our volunteers down there. She volunteers at our police department, so she kind of knows what's going on down there, too. This past Saturday, absolutely fantastic, about fifty, fifty-two people showed up at our Lower Lake Cemetery. The Lower Lake Cemetery has been struggling financially. They've only got one part-time paid person to try to do some maintenance and keep the irrigation going, which is now failing, but it was overgrown. It was overgrown so bad that in some areas, we had vines, blackberries, and other ivy-type vines that had grown over some of the headstones, three or four in just a similar section to any larger, but it's in other areas. We're able to clean that back with fifty volunteers that showed up. We still have a little bit more to do, so there'll be a notice coming out for another workday in our cemetery, but just one of those things that I really, again, can't say enough about our community. People turned out, and another special thank you to our Lake County Fire personnel. B-shift showed up with... B-Shift showed up with weed eaters and all the equipment and everything else and did a fantastic job. Specifically, one of our Planning Commissioners, Russell Kramer, and Mike Dean from the Lower Lake Action Group spearheaded and coordinated that effort along with Bob Manina, one of the board of directors for the cemetery district. Did a fantastic job and the cemetery's looking better now. Still a lot of work to get to do though. As Councilmember Bennett pointed out, attended the Lake Area Planning Commission, Planning Meeting and the Lake County Transit. It is a widening to four lanes. It's going to be an expressway essentially starting from Deener North on Highway 29, just a little bit past the Kids Corner intersection in two different segments, which will really improve travel time to Lakeport, especially in the morning hours. But it's also grant funded through the SHOP program, which is a state-funded program to try to get some of the trucks off of Highway 20 and get them onto Highway 29, which is a little safer route. We'll see if that happens. Unfortunately, we had to move forward with some cuts to our public transit. Lake Transit is having some significant financial hits, grants that we've been counting on for years are drying up. That money pool is drying up and so we had to cut some of the transportation routes, four-lane transit. In talking and listening to those people that are key and really understand how those schedules work and how the buses connect and make everything function and run properly, it was very disappointing. We are going to have some impact, so please if you do ride public transit or you have family that rides public transit, have them check the routes and the schedules because some of the later night routes we had to do away with, there just wasn't the ridership to support them. There was only two to three riders on a bus at night and we just couldn't pay the bus driver the same, you know, to keep those routes open. So keep in mind on that. Project Restoration is a project that I'm working with. Our, throughout in itself, they're doing a fantastic job. We're now looking at and we're submitting, actually we've got a couple more days, to submit a grant for 1.22 million in hopes of acquiring some facilities for our homeless, or higher functioning homeless, to see if we can hopefully get them back into either treatment or into a workforce, get them back on their feet to fill that gap between homelessness and then being back at home. Really like to thank Senator McGuire for heading that up and getting some of the money that is part of that grant. As Councilmember Sabatier said, we are looking at and trying to stay ahead of Prop 64, Prop 94 of the governor's marijuana initiative and how that's going to affect our city. I want to thank staff. You guys are doing a great job and bringing a good group of people together and I like what, I like the direction that we're going. I think we're really looking at not what's best for either the growers or against the growers or that, but what's best for the residents of the city and the city itself. Last, we had some comments earlier on the lake and gosh, I wish we had the funding to work on the lake because I don't care for the smell myself. And I have been one of those here and I remember walking on the Cresties back when I was a kid, when it would all blow up and dry on the beaches. But the fact is, the little city of Clearlake doesn't have the budget nearly necessary to work on that lake. If you're interested in helping to clean our lake, you might want to contact Assembly Member Cecilia Aguilera, I can never pronounce her name, Curry, who comes from Livers, California. She has an office in Davis and she is spearheading, I believe it's AB 707, to help look at more, she's funding the UC Davis project to look at the allergies, see what we can do to try to clean up our lake. So let's hope that she is successful in that. So call your assemblywoman and give her your support. On roads and everything else, we all want our roads done now. The fact is, it's taken, it's taken 40 years just to get the initiative through and now we have a road project. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Folsom, but I don't actually think we've received any payment yet for Measure B from the state or we shouldn't.
We just received first payment a few weeks ago.
So we just received the first payment. If you weren't here, and most of you weren't, we front-loaded that with monies that we had saved from gas tax and stiff monies and things like that, so we could begin grading roads during the better weather. Because once November hits, we can't be grading roads because it's too wet to do so. So the other things that happened is plus our Councilmember Sabatier, Vice Mayor for Power to the Youth, but prepping the parks, cleaning the parks, fixing broken toilets, that all comes out of our public works staff, which there is a finite number of people. So when we're not grading roads, it's because we're mowing the grass, we're fixing the toilets, we're doing those kinds of things. So please keep that in mind, that we just have a handful of people that are doing all the work for the city and we'll try to get to the roads as soon as we, as soon as we can. We're going to grade right up to the last minute where we can't, can't do it anymore. But it's exciting to see the grading going on and again, we're ramping up to get that done. And the trailer will help. I'm going to wrap it up with that. We do have some great things going on in the city. Please come to the city council meetings because an educated public is a good public. You can, you can work with us or we can hear your opinions before we come to a meeting like tonight where we're actually protesting. We want to hear you before we come to this one. So thank you for involving yourself in the, are you going to go again?
I have some.
Okay. It's pretty typical for those who don't really come to council meetings that Vice Mayor Sabatier always wants a second term. So go ahead.
I wanted to ask interim Chief Selly if he can name, I wanted to ask interim Chief Selly if he can name the names of the volunteers that helped put together National Night Out because I know Linda and Roger were a part of it, but if he could name the names, I think they deserve to be recognized for their efforts.
Well, there was many volunteers, but Linda and Roger, Linda Peralta and Roger Shudo were the key components, the engine that drove it. They spent a great deal of time collecting donations throughout our community from our businesses and things like that. There's been many donors throughout our community to make that a successful event. So they're primarily the force behind it. Also, several of our volunteers, Ross Barto and Richard Moore and several other volunteers were able to help, but those were primarily the key components that were really getting donations and bringing ice to the event and helping set up and things like that. So pretty much, most of the department pitched in.
And explorers?
We also had a couple of explorers that were helping as well. Absolutely.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you. That was worth the second term.
We have fun. Thank you all for coming. Do you have any items for future agenda? Anything from the group? Thank you very much. We're adjourned.
Can you guys please fix the sign?